Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:30. Welcome everyone, we have some nice visitors here today. And welcome everyone who's here via Zoom to our meeting. Held hybrid, thanks to our executive orders. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meetings held on September 14th, 2021.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from our meeting held September 14th, 2021.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the audience of citizens. If there's any business to come before the board that is not already on the agenda. Aye, nothing, okay. Next item on the agenda is Mr. Ted Batko Jr. speaking about the Plains Road drainage as the continuation of last meeting.
Yeah, I was here two weeks ago. I, you know, talked to my neighbors before last, two weeks ago meeting and then after, after the meeting here, I also spoke with them, you know, on things. And at the same time, I told them, you know, I'm gonna continue and I'm gonna be here today if they wish to come or something, to continue the progress. So I got a brief handout here. That's the original attachment in back.
Okay.
And what I wanted to do is, again, to take an opportunity to commit into dialogue that we've been doing and document the concerns regarding the Plains Road crossing. Try to give it that title so that other people may look around and see what we're talking about. That's why I mentioned on the agenda, it might have been helpful to continue that nomenclature, just kind of title it that, kind of all encompassing as to what's happening in there. So, again, for the record, I wanted to attach my original handwritten notes that I brought and spoke about at, uh, two weeks, two weeks ago at our meeting. The few concerns here, we covered some items last time, but I'm being more in the questioning mode now. And a couple of the things I would be interested in looking into would be the, the structural integrity of the twin metal cove. Structurally, how sound is it? And what was a reasonable safe life expectancy of the metal? Usually you can figure out how many years that metal will be in a safe mode before corrosion gets, gets, gets the best of it. And then the other item too would be the overall integrity of the Plains Road, the roadway itself, the embankment, the road surface, things like that. And then I was looking, looking there and I mentioned specifically here, looking at the roadway surface when you look at the wheel path over the cove. Now that's the, that would be the track that's nearest to the outlet portion. And it, it seems to have a fair amount of distress right in that area of the twin cove crossing. So that's another, another kind of question I'd like to have someone look into. And then I'm kind of requesting, looking forward, is, you know, copying professional engineers' report, addressing the type of investigation they're gonna do, the conclusions they may reach, and, and any recommendations that they would have in order that we could, as neighbors and residents, review and share. And then, in keeping with that, I just would like to add that if there's work that may be required, our construction season will be coming to an end soon. And as we know, we get usually a long cold winter approaching, so looking seasonal, it's only since October 1st, October, November, but a lot of the other work is more difficult to accommodate once you get into the overall freezing, water freezing in the coves and things like that, so. Those are the kind of questions I put together, so I was wondering what our study is.
Well, we've, uh, we arranged for the town engineers to go over and review the, uh, cove and, um, give us, and give us a report and analysis of what their findings are. You may have seen, you may have seen them over there, I'm not sure, I think they're, I know they're going back tomorrow to actually go through the cove, but I think they may have already been there to, to inspect. The town crew was over to try and take, or they were scheduled to go over, I'm not sure if they'd been there or not, to, uh, to look at the part of the, the pipe that seems to have lifted. The photographs showed that it had lifted up a little bit, so they're going over to look at that, make sure there's no petting or what are going through there. I expect that we'll hear back from our engineers, you know, shortly.
Who is, who is your engineer?
Jeff Jacobson, our Jacobson engineer.
Oh, okay.
They've worked on, they're working on a project similar to this one up in line.
Okay.
And they've, they've offered some solutions there and they've also, I can't remember what the other time, they're, they're working on similar situations in other towns.
Exactly.
So I expect that we'll be, we'll get a report from them and we'll move forward from that.
That's what I like to do is to see, you know, how to do it, what to do and what the conclusions may be.
Yep.
Uh, as an aside there, that Bob Rayner, one of the Rayners there, he actually had his handyman, uh, yesterday cleaning out all the debris on the inlet side. It was, it's been blocked for some time.
Okay.
So the water's back down again.
Okay.
And they did a nice job picking up a lot of the dead branches and things of that sort in the area.
Okay. Thank you for us. I, I'm not sure if the crew got over there or not, but they were scheduled to be there this week, so.
Yeah, well, it's pretty neat and clean, so if your engineer gets there, that would be good.
Good.
Very good, okay.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is an informational discussion regarding foods. Proposed food scraps program. And we have Lenore Grunco here from the Sustainability Group, I'm not sure if you want to come up and give us some information, Lenore, if you want me to say what I know.
Sure. I guess for you guys, it's not new. We've been exploring, um, the, uh, recycling in essence of food scraps because of, uh, in order to reduce the amount of garbage that's going into the waste, household waste. Mira, which is the facility where we bring our garbage down, correct me if I'm wrong, I, um, you said that very quickly. Is scheduled to close, I think, almost less than a year now.
There's a closing soon.
And, um, so we just have to reduce the amount of stuff to throw away. And there is a anaerobic facility which takes food scraps and turns it into renewable energy and compost. This recycling process isn't free and I, I think it could be debated as to whether or not it's cheap. I, I, I don't, I don't, I can't say what's cheap and what's expensive, but there is a cost mostly for the transporting of the food scraps from where we, where we're talking about, at the transfer station to the anaerobic facility in Southbury, Connecticut called Ponte Biddle. So, um, I'm not sure what it's supposed to cost.
It's about $220 a month for four barrels.
For four containers, okay. Um, many, many towns are doing this already. We're, we're not late, we're not early to the game, but, um, we're hoping that to do it. It seems like it's the right thing to do. Because of course, we want to recycle as much as we can and I don't think it's any secret that the stuff that we're recycling now is maybe not getting recycled. That's another story for another discussion, but presumably getting the food scraps out of the garbage can reduce our garbage between 20 and 30%. And certainly for big facilities like restaurants or any kind of multi-unit housing, that it could generate a lot of food scraps. And that's, you know, there, there's discussions about who and how this can happen, so.
Well, thank you, it, it really is a, um, I think you hit on something that I feel pretty strongly about, it is, it's the right thing to do environmentally. You know, our garbage right now is being trucked out to Ohio, I think, or Pennsylvania, um, which is just, it's crazy. And we're, uh, you know, if we can reduce that in mass by 20 or 30%, that's, that's quite a bit. I don't know if we'll reduce it in weight. And that's really where we end up paying, we pay by the ton. So, so this $220 a month, it's going to, this is not gonna, it's not gonna be a wash, it's not gonna be a savings, but, um, environmentally it'll be a plus.
Right.
So, you know, we have to decide as a community if this is the thing we want to do. I, I think, I know that I do, I know Duane has been working on it, the groups that we've been working with, absolutely. Um, and I think we can, we can present this to the community in such a way that we move forward. We can look to Essex, who's our closest neighbor who is participating in this right now. The contract from the company is being reviewed right now, but, um, so we'll be able to have that back shortly.
I'm, I'm curious as to how it would work, with people like myself that has our garbage picked up.
Well, it would be, if you want to participate right now,
You would have to.
You have to take it down to the transfer station and find, find the barrels and put them in, it'll be, it'll be obvious, they'll be well marked and all that kind of thing. The other part of this is that I believe that Blue Earth, if we can get enough local participants, will go around like a garbage truck and pick up the food scraps. But we need to get enough participants and that would be a part of our marketing and all that kind of thing. I think that Adams has already participated in this.
Yes, yes, they are.
So, so they're already coming to town, so if we can get some groups, um, it would be, I think it'd be a win.
Some of the trash collection companies may offer, they offer the blue recyclable bins, maybe they'll eventually get on board.
I don't anticipate that.
Oh, and I asked them if it would be something they would be considering in the near future. And I said, maybe two years. I got a very quick no.
Because it's so new, they probably don't want to, but they're forced to do it.
Well, the only thing I put it is really the question, they put it, they would have to put it in a different kind of truck, they couldn't drive it, they couldn't take your household waste and then your food scraps. Would have to go, it, there's logistically, I understand the concerns, but, um, right now, that's not going to happen.
So, did you care about the $5 million that the state?
Yes, yep, I was actually at a seminar this morning, or workshop this morning, um, talking about how we can take advantage of that. And that will help us with our purchases, it might in fact even help us with, um, with payroll, because we might have, we might need to bring someone on to help out with this, so.
Why don't we think about building our own anaerobic facility? You think I'm joking?
No, I don't think you're joking.
Because in some of my research, it's, it said you can build one for maybe as little as, if I recall correctly, 12, uh, $1.2 million. Now, wouldn't that be a boon if all the towns in this region got together? Built one? There's, there's a thought.
It is a thought, and there's quite a bit that goes into it. As far as I know, there, there's only $5 million that's, that's available for this, so we gotta get, you know, it's a first come, first served, so we've gotta get it.
For the whole state?
For the whole state. So I don't think they would put $1.2, but let's look into it, it's something to look into. There's a big farm, and I was talking to our zoning enforcement officers the other day, and they work at a town that has a huge farm, dairy farm, that has built their own, um, compost or anaerobic recycler and they're, they're,
Where are they?
Gangbusters, I can't remember, it's way up in the north.
Probably in East.
Yes, yes, yes.
In Connecticut?
In Connecticut, yeah.
Okay, huh.
So, you know, there's, it's a long ways to go for us in our, in our transfer station and our, in our disposal of our waste, but this is a good first step.
And that, that's exactly it, there's a lot of, there's a lot of little decisions that need to be made, but I think that we just have to get started and then start to clean up the little pieces along the way.
That's right, and, and we do have a long way to go.
Did Joyce do?
I'm sorry, we have a question?
Okay.
Um, they're questioning the food scraps outside with wild animals, I wonder how this is working elsewhere?
In, in my research, which is really just talking to Essex, Old Saver and, um, Stonetham, uh, there, there are no problems with, you know, any more animals that are already, already in place, so.
Yeah, that's.
And I would assume that the containers are,
They have lit.
Lit and then semi-cold or whatever, so that would help with the, that's what I would presume.
The fellow at the Essex Transfer Station said they're still having more problems with other parts of the transfer station, but they're not having.
Well, that's actually what I'm hopeful as well is that this, um, this will help reduce some of the animal problem that we have, the rodent problems we have down at the transfer, at the existing transfer station, so.
Absolutely, good point.
So that's where we are, just for information, you know, that was a great report, I appreciate it, Lenore. And we're, uh, we are working with, um, with the attorney right now to review the contract. And we'll, if we need to go to town meeting to do this, we will, if we're going to, I'm not sure that we do need to go to town meeting, but I think it's a decision that we can make.
Doesn't sound like we have to be, but.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, next item on the agenda is discussion of Esberry Transit District expansion. Jim, I can review a report from the Esberry Transit District, there's been a, a study going on for quite a few years that was originally sponsored by, uh, the River Project on the recommendation of the DOT. The background really quickly is that, um, the DOT is recommending that we combine Middletown Transit District and Esberry Transit District. Um, this is really, by combining the districts, it improves, it hopefully improves the service to the, to all of the region from Middletown to Saver and over into Old Line. The, I don't think the transit goes over to Old Line. But it's, uh, we've been meeting for quite a bit to, to do that, the efficiency of having one, one district is, was quite a bit, is a big driving factor in this. We don't, I don't expect that we're gonna see any of those savings, the state might see some savings, but we're not gonna see any, um, any increase in fees either. They're gonna move, they've already moved the offices up to Middletown, so.
Well, they already have.
Yeah.
Well, okay. That tells you the way it's going right there.
It is going in that direction, all of the, you know, the, the Esberry Transit District Board and the Middletown just District Board have all been meeting. We've had a joint committee that's been working for upwards of a year now to try and get this together. DOT, as you might imagine, has been, um, pretty slow in their response time and anything that we want to get from them, but they've been supportive and are, are encouraging this, this expansion, if you will, it's really going to be an expansion of the Esberry Transit District.
I think the, the question that most people would have is, you know, the cost, is there any cost associated for, you know, our budget?
Yep.
You know, and there's struggle money, I guess, and there's probably state money, but, and there's also local money here.
That has been the big, um, the biggest question, or the first question that every town has asked, and that, that was really the first question that I had at the very beginning of this, when the state came down to the district, uh, Transit District Board. So what's, what's in this for us, how is this gonna help us? And ultimately, it helps us by providing for a more solvent, fiscally solvent and a stronger transit company, if you will, it's really a district, a bus company. It's fascinating to me how much these buses do be used.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with.
COVID slowed it down quite a bit, and it's not an easy task to, to take the bus from Saver to, to Middletown right now. But it will become easier. And there's, there's.
Because everybody's used to the little buses running around here, and you have a Middletown and there's big buses running around there.
Well, that's, that's population drift.
Right. So it's probably not the big buses down here, it'll continue with the smaller buses.
Right, and you might see the, you know, Voyager buses go to Saver, it's transportation or something like that, but, you know, we'll see how that plays out. That's, that's really going to be, um, up to the staff to figure out how to do it.
Best utilization for the population demand or whatever, you know.
Right, and I think, I didn't read it, but I think there was an article in the Connecticut Examiner about, about exactly this.
I think that's where I first saw it, they've been working on it for almost three years.
It's been along, the study was begun two, three years ago, it's been a long process. What, what, what you'd like to do is have the executive director of the Transit District come to speak with us on, uh, next, on our next board meeting and give us a little presentation, answer any questions you might have, I'll, I'll get another copy of this to Duane. You guys can ask him, you know, we get some information, we'll present some information and we'll have a resolution that is on the bottom of this, or the back of this to, uh, to support that, that expansion, if you're so inclined.
Oh, I can go ahead for a minute.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, that is our agenda. I, uh, I think there are a couple of things that I'd like to announce, we have a, um, Connecticut United has got a truck coming over to High Street at the Tri-Town Youth Services and the Parks and Rec Office that will, uh, will provide assistance for folks who need rental assistance. Um, I don't know, but I think that Eversource is gonna have a group there to help people with their, if they need electrical assistance or with their, with their utilities charges. Um, the, the CHC is going to man the pantry, so if folks are coming for that day, the pantry will be open a little bit longer.
And when is this again?
That's October.
Nope, December, September, it's this Thursday.
Oh, it's this Thursday, okay.
Oh, the day after tomorrow.
Yep, the day after tomorrow. That's one thing that's happening, there's also a housing survey that's on our website. Please, everyone, take the time to, to fill that out and, and to respond to that, because that really is gonna play right into the regional housing, um, plan. And also our own local housing plan, we need to know what the needs are and the only way to really answer that is with this financial service, so, so that's happening as well. Um, we had a great family day, it was a lot of fun. And, uh, and that's, that's what I have right now. Now, our audience of citizens, citizens already have passed, but we have Nick here, um, and I'm assuming he came to want to speak, so.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for you.
All right.
Do you have to make a motion to open up the audience of citizens again?
I'm sure, let me do that, thanks.
I make a motion that we open up the audience of citizens again.
Okay, I'll second that.
I was told to start at seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is it three or six?
Six, three, six, three.
I had a question, I, I.
Come to the table.
I gave you a call probably five or six times about some of the construction that went on. And, uh, you know, more importantly, the Union Street drainage, and, uh, I just think that I have some questions that I wanted to have Jim, and I didn't know if Duane was here to review, but I have my contract and our contractor that I was hired. And I think there's just a lot of not clear transparency in what is being asked and then what is being performed.
Okay.
So I'll give Jim a copy, you have a copy as well.
You can leave one for Duane, I'll put it in his box if you like.
Okay. Duane? You ready? This is our contractor that I hired, but I just wanted to kind of clarify that, you know, my contract proposal was not exactly the scope of work that was asked to be performed. It was, because, you know, there's a lot of items that were left out from the secondary contractor, contractor who was awarded the job. And I get deemed tied bid and lose the job, but there's parts of the job that he's not completing.
Okay.
So, you know, topsoil, all reconstruction of the lawns, everything behind the curbs is everything that I put at my price, as well as a riprap plunge pool going into the existing stream bed, and those are not what was performed.
Okay.
So my two things for you are, one thing would be, if that was asked of the competitor or the contractor, is he gonna come back and be obligated to do so? Or will that be shown in the reduction of his price?
I haven't gotten his invoice yet, I know you requested that, when I do get that invoice, I'll share that with you. I, I know that you've been proposing that plunge pool and, and other things that, that were not, they, they were not part of the scope that was being asked. So, um, you did include it in your bid, that's, that's true. Um, they, they're not going to be performed by the contractor. The tunnel will back, just like we do on most of the roads that we do, as you're aware, we go back and back, build them ourselves.
But that was what was asked for?
Uh, the plunge pool, I don't, well, not, not to my knowledge, I don't think you and I spoke about this, I think Eric, um, the highway foreman.
And then the other thing is on his bid, there is no budget, money or pricing for paving the reconstruction of that section of the road.
That's it. That's a separate, that's a separate proposal that you, uh, your bid included.
So I have his other.
You did not on the bid, you did not on the bid the entire route.
I have his other paving quotes that he provided me.
Mm-hmm.
And the shoulder repair that he did pave was not on that quote, and that I did price on my quote, shouldering, shoulder repair. So he did, he did not quote shoulder repair.
Your proposal included, um, the repair of where you were, where you were putting the pipe in.
That's what was done.
That's what, that's what you asked for.
I did.
What he did, and you didn't want, you did not want a bid on the, the paving of Union Street, is my recollection. We, uh, or maybe you did, I don't know.
Yeah, there's three, if he looked at this, there's three of them.
Yep, there you go.
Okay, none of those are on his contract.
That's because he had provided a separate contract for paving.
I have a contract, and not that scope of work is not on that.
Well, half a lane, you had a half a lane install, half lane repair.
Right?
Right.
Right?
Right.
He doesn't.
No, he doesn't, he had a, uh, he proposed, well, I don't have that in front of me, this is, this is only awarded.
I know.
And I'm happy to go over with you, the, the paving contract that was included.
I have that as well, not just, um, and I would also ask for the loom tickets for the material that was delivered to the job. If you, if you were lying, I'd go for yardage.
Yep.
Okay, so you were told in the meeting that he did the job for $24,000 and there was a $10,000 limit for gravel. So how much gravel did the town purchase and bring in on site?
The town didn't purchase any gravel.
Well, you did, but you, you.
He, he purchased it all.
Right, and there shouldn't be loom tickets.
Well, then we'll ask for them.
Okay. And as far as the paving aspect of it and misleading me on what I should do, I should just move on?
No, I'm just letting you, um, if, if you, if there was a misunderstanding or something like that, we've talked about that with your, with your, uh, your, your.
My contract here, my contract here has a scope of work.
Yep.
Okay, there is no scope of work here.
Okay.
No scope, and this is dated March 6th. Mine's dated August 4th. So there's a six-month gap between here and calling me, and no time to put together a scope of work.
Now, there's, there's, no, that's not accurate, but, um.
Why don't you use the work here?
I'm not talking about the scope of work, the six-month gap. Um, I don't know why yours, you redid your bid, I think you had an earlier bid that came in somewhere around the same time as, as, uh, April, March, April.
Mine's August 4th.
I understand that that proposal is August 4th.
Right.
You, you provided an earlier proposal for that, that I gave back to you and asked you to, to quantify some things. Subsequent to that, we asked this contractor to give me a not to exceed, because you were told it was gonna take three weeks.
So I'm supposed to.
You told me it was gonna take three weeks to do the job.
I'm supposed to quantify.
He told me it was gonna take three days.
He said three days.
Yep.
He was there two weeks.
And then he provided, and then he provided this not to exceed.
I quantify like you just asked. I quantify, like you just asked.
Not-to-exceed thirty-five thousand dollars.
But you asked me to clarify the scope of work to perform the town, we just said.
Okay.
There is no description here.
Okay.
No description.
I'm sorry.
Okay? As far as paving, he is not a low-bid contractor on the state DAS contract.
He was low-bid on this contract.
You don't have any numbers from ZILCOM?
I have a not-to-exceed. I have a not-to-exceed thirty-five thousand.
Except you what?
Thirty-five thousand.
Okay, but what? There's no scope of work here.
Yes.
There's no scope. Did you what? Do you see a scope of work there? So you asked me to clarify something, and this is submitted.
Yeah.
This is submitted to nothing. There is no scope of work here.
Okay.
So we just go, I give you a scope of work, get called expensive, that was apples to apples, and then, but there's nothing to compare it to, and I lose the job.
In this sense, yes.
That's what we're doing with taxpayer.
Well, that's not what we're doing, that's what we're doing on this project.
So, okay, so we don't have a bid for the paving on that specific shouldering repair. And there is a bid here.
Okay.
And we don't have a problem with that.
I don't think that you're describing this correctly.
There's a full description.
I understand that. I'm not going to sit here and picket with you about it. You've described it, I understand that. I've responded to you with what we did.
Right.
And we can talk about the fact that you proposed three weeks, he told me three days. It took him a week.
I don't see three weeks on here. I was told a number.
It says three weeks.
And where does it say not-to-exceed the time limit? On here? Is there a time limit?
It says not-to-exceed thirty-five thousand.
So is it time limit or is it money? Is you're telling me.
It says at the time, three weeks.
You're telling me.
Last thing that you say is three weeks.
Okay, but if I honor a number, what is the problem?
Time.
You're telling me time.
That is an arbitrary.
You're telling me money, and there's no scope of work.
Okay.
This is why we have town engineers. This is why we have town engineers. We don't create cloud when we put taxpayer money out for hire for work.
Mm-hmm.
This is a problem.
Okay.
Okay? And I'm a large taxpayer in this town.
I understand that, I appreciate it.
Well, you don't, because I have six phone calls in your office over the last two weeks, and none of them get returned.
I speak with your, we have much more civil conversations than when you and I speak through your.
I don't get phone calls back. Okay? And this is the problem I have. This was supposed to have a town engineer come in here and lay this out, okay? Then they put an RFP out with a lawyer, okay, a request for price legally. And that's not what we're doing here. There is zero description, there is a full description. There is a time, there is a number, there's a number, there's a time, and they contradict each other. And I end up losing. I have employees, I have taxes to pay in this town, $50,000 I paid Jim and Jim. So when I lay my guy off a month early this winter, how do you feel about that?
I feel it, that's.
This is wrong.
You should do better work.
This is wrong, better work.
Go drive down Rivers Street and show me about that.
We are not talking about.
Show me about the contract.
I am talking about this job.
I understand that.
Okay?
But past work comes into the decision-making process. There was not supposed to be a patch bay, that's.
Angus, we're staying focused to this. If there was a problem there, past, past.
Past work comes, I did let you know, Nick.
No, you didn't.
I did let you know.
You were on vacation.
I talked to you as soon as I got back and so.
So here we are, wasting taxpayer dollars. What is the paving number? We don't even know if we're paying them.
Yep.
It's not on his contract.
Dude, it's two separate contracts, I told you.
I have it, you gave me comments, there's no number for the paving we did on the road.
Thank you, Nick. This is not going to be resolved now.
I'd like Dwayne to be here, and I'll be here for our next meeting. I'd like to see an invoice for the work.
I look forward to it.
I'd like to see statements for the material, and I'd like to have Dwayne here.
I look forward to this conversation.
I'd like Dwayne, he would be here, but he is unavailable.
I didn't want him here.
Well, you know, that's the way it goes.
Tom, please hold this.
Two of the three selectmen are here, you are family, so I'm going to bite my tongue on what's going on, but it is not going to be solved tonight, Nick.
Perfect. And in two weeks.
And I love it, I love it when people say, I call, I call, I call, I call, or I email, I email, I email. There's nothing like face-to-face.
Right?
And face-to-face and confrontational is not the way to resolve anything. Whether it be in personal life or business life.
Because this is.
And we have to.
With a taxpayer and a contractor, this is unacceptable, and I'll get the short handle. So I'll let Dwayne be here, I'll see you in two weeks. I look forward to seeing the ticket totals and invoice.
I look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See, we have another visitor. We reopened, we reopened, audience of citizens, we have something to speak about?
Um, is this work?
Selectmen.
So, how about the board of finance?
That's about a half an hour.
It's next?
Yeah.
What time?
Seven thirty.
I'm running.
I think it was late, so were you.
Yeah.
I have no other business coming forward with the board, I know we've got audience of citizens here open again. If there's nothing else, I'll go for a motion to adjourn. Does anybody online have anything to say?
Uh, make a motion that we adjourn at seven oh five.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, this is the September 2021 regular meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance. First, first order on the agenda is the call, and we are called. Second would be approval of the minutes of our meeting of July 27th. Could I hear someone suggest that we accept those meetings?
Some of the, we accept, we accept the minutes of the July meeting.
All right.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Audience of citizens, any, anything to be brought before the board? Hearing none, we will move on to the next item. Tom is not with us, but has provided us a financial statement. And I'm always a bit confused without Tom to guide us through how to interpret this. The item that I am most interested in would be the, what the four lines at the top? It appears that we have $7,500 plus $1,000 available to us as of today, as of yesterday. We have no way, I always get confused on how to interpret that. I have no idea how to interpret that. So, I'm going to suggest that $7,000 is inadequate. We have an $18 million budget, so.
Seven million.
Seven million, thank you very much, I just.
Seven thousand would not be adequate.
Seven thousand, we should be concerned, I apologize, that seven million.
Seven trillion. You can all go home.
Give us time, yeah, give us time, give us time. So, so I guess, I see that he has added to our monthly reports the money from the American Rescue Plan, which we'll have Angus give us an update on later in the evening. So, sorry, unless there is questions, which I don't seem to have the ability to answer, I'm going to move on from the treasures report. Having met with Angus before the meeting, I know that there is no selectmen actions or recommendations, unless you wish, you have changed that since the last time we had it.
No, I don't think so. I think we'll talk a little bit about some of the, you know, some of the expenditures and things that we have.
As we, that's what I've asked Angus to do. Let's go through some of our monthly reports, and then we'll talk about some of the items that Angus is addressing, and how they roll to the budget. So, the first item that I would like to raise, well, number six is monthly budget report, and we can certainly deal with that. I'd like to have us, which is yours, save for you. I'd like to have us focus on what was sent to you on Friday, and it represents the best information we have on the closing as of June 30, 2021. And anyone can begin to say things, but if you look at the revenue report, you will see there is revenues of approximately, I am rounding, of approximately $140,000 that we did not anticipate. If you look at the expense report, you will see that there is approximately $142 million, there you go, $142,000 less than what we budgeted. In total, that puts us a little over $600,000 of what we will call surplus coming out of the June 30 number. Now, I'm going to suggest that you have the right to, if you relied upon me in June and July, you may be surprised at the magnitude of those numbers. I was surprised. I was under the assumption that everyone would spend their budget and that we would have a break-even or a slight surplus. I did not anticipate this kind of numbers. Would anyone like, would anyone like to go through either revenues or expenses? There are stories that Angus and I have to explain most of those kinds of numbers. Anyone wish to go through it in great detail?
If you have some tales about under expenditures, I think that would be.
Want to go through the expenditures, good. And I asked you what you want to go through, and you said expenditures, now I'm going to talk about revenue. There are revenues, just to give that number, we had very good tax collections, which I think is worthy of a humorous smile, because at one time we put this budget together, we thought the tax collections would be low, and we would have to borrow. So certainly that was a unfertile concern. And we picked up, there were housing sales of the magnitude of $93,000 more than what we anticipate from sales. People putting additions on their houses is another, I don't know, 50 or 70. 70 or something like that. We received reimbursements from the federal government for another 50, 60, 70. So while there's about $250,000 we didn't recognize, there are plenty of stories and revenues of things we anticipated and didn't get. But the net is of about $114 million more. Let's go through the expenditures, see if we can get a better idea. All right. All right, and I'll tell you what.
Well, I can go through, I mean, I don't know how far you want to get, or how detailed you want to get.
How detailed we wish.
You know, we can look at selectmen's where there's 15,000, almost $16,000 surplus. Half of that is from accounts manager assistant. And we hired someone, and they didn't stay, we have not been able to find someone else to come in. You know, there's another legal fees and notices. We didn't spend as much as we thought we were going to, by about $4,000. It's just, you know, these little, little ones, office supplies and postage, go figure that one out.
Would you suggest that one of the things that you're talking about now, and as we go through, that COVID slowed down the world, or the world that we participated in?
I think, I think a little bit.
Okay.
You know, office supply, I can't figure out why we didn't spend office supplies. That number is usually right very close to what we budget. In fact, a couple of years, it's been over, so I don't know what we didn't do. Maybe Joyce is just very frugal. Makes people use both sides of the paper, I don't know. Elections went way over, but we knew that was going to happen.
And we have received that partial, part of the reimbursement from both the state and federal government reflects that.
You can look at, you can look at Town Hall Operations is a big one, there's $30,000, $31,000 of surplus, 22 of which is fuel and gas and vehicles for. And my suggestion is, we just, we didn't burn a lot of fuel in the winters plowing snow. And with the efficiency that we put into the buildings is working. But I think most of that is gasoline and diesel fuel.
Did the town crew do less during COVID because of, you know, or?
No, no, no.
It seems like they're busy.
They were as busy as usual, except for the fact that we did not have a lot of plowing storms.
It was a mild winter, okay.
And to give you comfort, recognizing that potential, we reduced that number in the budget that you're currently on.
That's right, that's right. Now, you will also notice that town building repairs has $12,000 or $13,000 left. That is just contractors who have not gotten to the work yet, that will be spent down.
Let me follow up, and then you want to go back and forth? You have got contractors that asked to do work, being paid for in that budget, but had difficulty having them arrive and begin.
They're just having to.
So you do believe, and this, by the way, I do believe there's at least $10,000 of expenditures. 10% of the expenditures are going to go up and down in this summer. Not a major change in story, and this would be one of them.
It's not a major change, but that is one.
Quick question. Well, I'll think of it. When you mentioned fuel, can we or do we pre-buy our fuel?
We, we have contracts for how much it's going to cost.
We have a.
We have, we have, our diesel, we actually just installed a gasoline tank up at the garage. So we have a 500-gallon gas tank there and a 500-gallon diesel fuel tank there. We keep that full so that we can.
Well, you can pre-buy your fuel from the dealer.
Yep.
At a set price, and I wonder if we do, can or do that?
Yes, we do that.
As a town?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Yep. Diesel you can, and heating oil you can. Gas, the natural gas will not do that.
Okay.
And all of our buildings on Main Street are natural gas right now. You know, gosh, just keeping on going down, the assessor was overspent, tax collector was underspent. The bulk of that was part-time clerical salary, and we dropped that this year as a result of knowing that she did not need to have that much part-time help. Again, it comes to printing and mailing services. I think Bud was here putting together, putting envelopes together instead of having the company pay for it, pay for the company. Those are the two major savings that we found there, or under expenditures, if you want to. Special services, that boils down to contingency. I imagine that some of that will go into the, into the town building, but not all of it. And it's not a big, it's not a big, big number, $6,000.
We think some of that contingency left there with special services, you may call upon to.
Yeah, yeah, finish some of the buildings, you know. Building official, first time in a, well, no, we lost our secretary up there and just replaced her a month ago, so. So that would be in this, in this, will be reflected in this budget about five months.
You want to go in, would you go there on Planning and Zoning?
She retired June 30th.
Yeah, okay, right, so I don't know.
Planning and zoning did not have much activity, which is why you've got almost $22,000 that you spent by there, correct?
Right, right. Police protection. You know, the big part of that is the resident trooper, as it usually is. We don't know, we have to budget for 100% because we never know what it's going to be. The next largest, larger one is Communication Center and.
Can you comment on my benefits? There's almost $31,000 there, basically due to your change in insurance?
Yeah, yep.
Which we incorporated that savings into next year's budget, so hopefully there's some lessons learned.
Yep. Yep, sorry, I didn't mean to skip over that.
It's all right, just a bit younger.
Yeah, police protection, the next.
And please, just remember, we budgeted for the entire contract of the state for the resident trooper.
Yeah.
They did not, they charged a sum, smaller amount, which we incorporated into next year's budget.
I think they charged a 75% last year, usually, usually they come in, well, two years, two years prior to that, they were at 100%.
And threatening, they were suggesting they were going to charge 100-plus percent. So it is an odd world we live in, yes, sir.
Fire marshal. That's pretty close to where it needs to be. Communication center, I, that's, just the salary was, you know, Jonathan's retirement.
Move John out of here and put a little bit of that, very good.
Highway Department, again, road crew salary, I'm sure that that was just plowing, we didn't do. And equipment maintenance, I think we may be catching up with a little bit on some of the stuff, but I know this year we've already spent quite a bit on. but I, I know this year we've already spent quite a bit on, on.
I assume, I was attributing this to the fact we bought new machines a couple of years ago.
Well, that's part of it, that's part of it, but um, you know, this year we've already spent quite a bit up at the transfer stations.
Uh, don't go shooting past, all the people remember, uh, civil preparedness, which we overspent by close to twenty. And that is because.
That's totally, totally.
We put all the COVID stuff, we tried to put all the COVID related expenses in civil preparedness. And we have been reimbursed for much of that. We have had conversations with our auditors, so it is to be determined. Since we were reimbursed, we've had conversations that these lines, when they appear on our audit and statement, will recognize that income, but to be determined, we haven't ironed that out totally yet.
We went over the contingency fund in the highway department by eleven thousand dollars.
Yes, that's um. That's a story in nobody's name, with somebody's name we gave perhaps.
Yeah, I see aces.
I wish I said that.
Yeah. Me too.
Everybody will say it different.
Everybody has a friend, you know, I see aces.
There was a lot of trees and leaves and bees and John.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we have been reimbursed for that, or some portion of that as well?
Yep. No, we got, we've, we were, we were, that, that's part of, we actually, um, we spent, overspent that tw- you know, by whatever we spent, twelve thousand, but we um, we also are reimbursed for wear and tear on our equipment. So while we overspent by eleven-five, I think we, we, we got from FEMA somewhere in the vicinity of thirty, thirty-five because that um, you know, the expenditures that we had with, with overtime and with uh, and with, with um, just use of the equipment, we can rent the, basically rent the equipment. But we did have to hire, uh, you know, our tree guys to come in and take care of trees and all that kind of thing.
Public utilities, comment on public utilities, which is always you can do is stroke.
All I can tell you.
These are numbers they gave us.
Yeah, yep. I, I don't know how that happened, I'm, I'm not actually, I'm not confident that that's accurate. Because those are numbers that they, they provided for us. Uh, waste removal, you'll see uh, two, one, I, I don't think is accurate, water tests. I, I think we're going to find that that's six thousand, it was in fact spent, we did, we've done all the testing up there that DDP requires, so um, I anticipate that that will be, be there. Um, recycling salary, uh, should have been spent, but um, it wasn't.
If it wasn't for that recycling, we would have gone over that money.
Yep, yep. Uh, the next big one is, or bigger, larger one is uh, library, municipal library, assistance, assistance salary, and uh, we lost an assistant about halfway through the year, so. That was leftover. Uh, parks and rec, this is a number that we struggle with all year, every year because of the reimbursables. This year it's going to be more extreme than ever because self-funding programs, we see we've got a surplus of thirty-two thousand plus another self-funding basketball of eleven thousand, um, which makes up the bulk of that expenditure, summer youth program. We know we didn't spend any last summer because we didn't have a youth program. But we'll see that one if we look at revenues, we'll see the revenues that didn't come in.
You'll see revenues are down for rec, park and rec, we're down to sixty-five.
Yep.
So revenues are down sixty-five, expenses are down fifty-six.
Yep.
Maybe the math is they overspent by ten, I don't know, I never know how to do that.
Elementary school, go figure, um, that they didn't spend the seven, you know, by seventeen thousand dollars. Um, and, and really, just general government capital, uh, really boils down to uh, to two lines. The LOSIP infrastructure grant and that, that's something that we uh, we don't get the money until we apply for it, so um, that, that was not spent. We're spending that this summer on sidewalks and, and other infrastructure uh, because we have a total of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we've banked from LOSIP over the years and that, that's we're going to spend that this summer. Um, the fire department equipment, if you remember right, we put the two hundred and five thousand dollars in there because they had applied for a one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar grant. Um, they did not receive that grant, so we did not, did not spend that money. We spent seventy, which is what we actually budgeted for before they told us they were applying for the grant. That's for the SCBA uh, equipment. And those are the, the individual stories, so all of those are not great numbers by themselves, but they add up to a large number.
Well, and putting into another context, that's about two percent of our total budget.
Yeah.
To overs- to underspend by two percent, I suggest is noise. It could go in any direction. Uh, we have been fortunate, it has been going in our favor, but two percent, I mean, that's, I do not perceive that to be material other than two percent of a big number.
It's a big number.
Um, I'd also like to say that those that's underspent their department that were careful, that were, uh, that did a good job, that watched their pennies, that's a good thing and they should be congratulated on that. And um, four hundred thousand dollars, which is what this bottom line is basically. It's about eight days' worth of spending on a normal, uh, what we spend at the town hall, so. It's not a big deal. It sounds like a big, at my house, four hundred thousand dollars would be a lot of money. Um, and that's in the course of the town spending, it's, it's not that much really.
It is, it is a big deal to me and, and I think it, I think it is to everyone. Uh, and I think we'll, I know that we'll look at this year's budget with a little bit tighter eye, you know.
So that's point eight mil, right?
Yeah.
We thought, we, we thought we were going to be short, right?
That's right.
So we really, i- it's one point two mil is the swing, right? We thought we were going to be about two hundred short, which is point four mil.
Yeah, yeah.
And we wound up point eight mil in our favor, which is great, but it's a one, it's a, the variance is one point two mil.
Well, it's not, I, I'm not, you know, you look at these kind of things and your initial thought is great, but the second thought is, holy cow.
Yeah.
We, we, we should do better.
Yeah, eight aces a week, right?
But um.
Yeah, yeah, no. That's what the Beatles told us, yeah.
Point is, and your point is very well taken, but we did not expect seventy thousand dollars more in taxes.
No, understood, yeah. No, I know, a lot of it's.
It's a moving target.
Yeah, and a lot of it could be one-offs, you know.
Right.
Particularly this year, so, yeah, I'm just saying, it's, you know, it's an interesting differential.
I would, I would rather have to explain a two percent overage than a two percent under.
Well, I was going to say, it's better that we came in four hundred plus, rather than, you know, eight hundred K.
I'd rather come in, I'd rather come in five thousand dollars.
We'll be putting two hundred thousand of that back into our budget because we borrowed from that in order to keep that mil right.
Does anyone have any thoughts? How to, should we address the potential surplus differently than we have in the past? We have sort of nodded to each other that we think our twelve percent surplus is adequate and we're now adding to it. Should we just add to the surplus? Should we put it away in, in the capital fund? We put it away in capital fund, that sort of restricts our ability to use it other than capital, but lots of other towns have capital funds where they set money aside for a fire truck we're about to build, uh, build. Yeah, I guess we are. So does anyone have any thoughts on, what do you think?
My suggestion is that money goes into surplus. Because what's going to happen is the fire department is going to want their station, they don't want another truck, our borrowing is going to go up, and we're going to want to raise the mil rate. And if we have a big enough surplus, we won't have to do that. So I think I'll do the surplus so we have it ready for us because we know this is all coming.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good thought.
And, and I'm comfortable, many years ago when I was a youngie on the board finance, John Bauer had us put three hundred and forty thousand dollars into capital, which sure makes sense. Except you lose it, it's not available to you to do things you want. If you want to pay down the fire truck in future with its surplus, we can do it out of surplus. So uh, I sort of like the idea of keeping it in surplus.
You can always.
Just to, just to express my, my thinking, immediate response is that's good, but also if we put it in capital, then we won't need to borrow as much.
That's true too.
You know.
Well, I, I'm, I'm supporting Bill's position. We can still go into surplus to pull money out of and buy down, so it doesn't have to officially be there. Now, the reason I suggested sur- uh, capital is those who seem to be a bit more sophisticated in their municipal finances have capital funds where they set money aside for anticipated capital expenditures. Now, maybe I have a sophisticated fi- uh, municipal finance envy, but. I don't know, just it.
I don't, I don't, I don't see the point in it, and, and you know, you mentioned a fire truck. It could be a street sweeper.
It could be a police car.
It could be the firehouse, it could be the police car.
Could be the library.
Could be all kinds of things.
It could be the school.
And, 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 yeah, I was just going to say, I read in the paper where the middle school is, is thinking about a million dollars worth of security work.
Right.
They're going to come with their hat in their hand and they're going to want to talk to us, I think. And, and that whole four hundred thousand dollars, if that happens, is probably gone, you know, just like that. Uh, it could be a lot of things, but once you put it somewhere, it's, it, it's there. If it's in surplus, you can always put it in capital and you can keep it and spend it how you want. Or if an emergency comes up, you can spend it that way too.
Excellent, and that's, that's sort of my thought, I'm just getting a. That surplus is just getting a, a bit large.
It's still, it's still within state, it's still within state.
We're not at fifteen, are we?
It's still below the law.
We're not at fifteen.
I think we could get close to fifteen.
Or is it close to, is it close to fifteen? Well, we have to put it somewhere, right?
I do for sure.
All right, so if it's in capital, you turn around and say that we could take out if we needed for, for something.
For a capital loan.
A capital loan, well, yeah, most of the stuff we're talking about is capital.
Correct.
Uh, or if you put it in surplus, you can take it out for almost anything.
That's right.
If you want. If it's in surplus, the state's going to be a lot happier with us because our.
Oh, yeah.
Because our surplus is getting closer to where they want us.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
That's good, now, I would like John to comment, he has comment reaching into the best, that if your surplus is too large, John has suggested, yes, they may, others may look upon it with a smile and we could be harmed by that. Am I capturing your theme, John?
On, on occasion, yes, I think it depends on what, you know, how, how someone is casting their eye at a town's finances, right?
Right.
So if, if you look like you're cash flush, under certain circumstances, it may disqualify you from perhaps availability of funds that might otherwise be available. So there's that, there's probably a balance to be had there.
We were worried about that a couple of years ago.
Yeah. Because we were, we've been, we were, historically, we've been low. Historically, we've been, historically, we've been low and in the past, I don't know how it played out exactly because I don't, I'm not sure about the decision-making process, but in the past, we have received certain funds that were allocated to Deep River that maybe if we were in a much different cash position in terms of our surplus, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure that the surplus, I think what we're talking about mostly is our education, um, the ECS money.
Yeah.
Um.
I don't know.
And that, that's, that's.
The criteria for determining that.
Most of that is based on how many uh, families that we need to, that are provided assistance at the, for lunches and things like that. Um, and that's, that's not, not, not changing that much to my, to my dismay.
So is there some level at which a town is graded in terms of how much a surplus can be? Is it based on population or?
The recommendation coming out is we have identified as experts, say between twelve and fifteen. Our auditor said the other day fifteen percent.
Fifteen.
So we're creeping up to where it should be.
It would help, if, if we wanted to go for a Moody's bond rating, um, we are now in a place where we'd probably get a good rating. If we got up to fifteen percent, we would have an excellent rating.
What's wrong with that?
We've been in that single digits relatively low in the past.
Right up to. Yep, absolutely.
Relatively low single digits.
And putting it in a surplus gives you more flexibility. And, but it doesn't diminish record keeping or allotment or any of that sort of thing. You're still, you're still set into the same kinds of recording paths.
Okay, now, this is more a question, I think, for Tom who's not here than it would be for the people here. But is, is surplus or capital invested a different way or are they both, all invested the same way?
We have asked on that from time to time, and my argument, the basis of that, my argument is, if we have capital, we will not expect to draw on for some period of time. Can he invest it for a longer period of time? A year, six months and get a better rate? Uh, and he has investigated that and he is, he is heavily constrained by what he is a municipal finance, able to constrain. He has never been able to do it that would benefit from it. But he should be here to finish that question. So I'm giving you, because I was only, I always thought if you have a longer horizon, you should be able to invest it.
Yeah, because the interest rates are going to start going up.
Yeah, the ten, ten year is like almost one and a half now.
Right, as they go up.
They sure are.
And that, that becomes a lot of money, so.
Marking it down.
Yeah, it would be good.
Marking what you have, but the, that's, so, you know, fuck, interest rates go up.
Goes down. All right, I'm going to suggest, unless anyone wishes to overrule, that we park this conversation. Auditors will be in November, I believe, and they should be finished November. We will have a, an official number in November. We'll revisit, um, we'll decide whether we wish to move it, but I'm going to encourage us to think, we as the board of finance have done a job that deserves a pat on the back. Uh, we have come in under budget and we should, we should celebrate that. Uh, we will decide what to do with it as we move forward. Um, with that detailed discussion on June thirty finished, does anyone wish to spend any amount of time on the actual June thirty numbers? Oh, sorry, September thirty, the current budget. Does anyone have anything that they noticed there? Here is my constant rule of thumb, this is the third month, we should have about seventy-five percent left in each line item. Uh, I have noted those things which have seventy-five or less. We are doing fine. Now, note, Bud thinks we're doing fine. Bud thought we were going to break even, so you should from time to time discount my theory. But uh, my criteria suggests we're doing fine.
I don't listen to you on that.
Are me encouraged to say that? Um, there are a couple of things, if you so wish, we can talk about communications. We pay Valley Shore, we pay them on a, two times a year, so we're open, we missed our seventy-five there. Um, we pay, here's a couple of people we pay. There is one place that we do need to stop, if I can get my things back. Uh, our sprinkler systems, we pay them once a year, it looks like we're over there. Um, po- uh.
Political subdivisions.
What's that?
Political subdivisions.
Political subdivision, Angus should I take off, but I believe he makes most of those payments once a year as we go into the.
So maybe that's why, right?
It is a timing issue. Same is true with like the, the dog warden in Chester, that we pay them upfront and that type of thing, so. Um, the one I wish to have you focus on, and Angus will take over. Would you talk about police protection, uh, the vehicle maintenance particularly? You'll notice they are over budget by thirty-two percent.
Yes, we, we had a, a failure with the Ford Explorer. And I don't remember specifically what it was, but it had to do with the rear end. Had to be rebuilt, it was a eight thousand dollar bill. We didn't anticipate that, I don't know how you can anticipate that kind of thing. So that, that drove us up, so what we're going to, what we're going to find is that that line is going to, as we go through the year, we're going to see that, that number cro- uh, rise a little bit because, you know, regular maintenance is going to happen.
That was only anticipated.
That's totally unexpected.
It'll be like the Grand Over.
Yeah, came out of the blue, so I expect that that'll be about eight thousand dollars over budget by the end of the year.
So maybe fourteen, five, sixty-five.
Did the new, did the new car replace a car that was donated?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Now, the rule of thumb that we have nodded to the last, over the last year, I think that may be right. We have said that if someone, if there's a line item that's overdrawn, and we believe there is. We have said that if someone, if there's a line item that's overdrawn, and we believe there is adequate funds within the budget, we will just track it and nod that we will deal with it as the year goes on. If we do not think the budget has adequate funds to cover that shortfall, we would be thinking about moving money to the surplus. I have no reason at this point to think that our budget is not adequate to cover. And again, we will monitor it.
Now, this, this line, I anticipate for next year's budget will increase, not because of the cars are getting older or anything like that, because we actually have four constables working now, so we have four cars on the road. So, and we haven't had that for quite a long time, so that number's gonna need to go up a little bit. And Jim, to answer your question, it did replace, that car did replace a car, but we are keeping that car outfitted, we've got it outfitted in order to have a spare when one breaks down, if one breaks down, and also to use on road jobs and things like that.
I teach over Easter, as people may know, they have folks on bicycle, police on bicycles, walking a beat on the bicycle, so in case that car breaks down.
So do they leave the capital? Capital companies ride around on bikes.
Alright, let us go to general, general government capital currently. Angus, let's talk about the elementary school roof, which we, is another celebration for us, which I just say things and etc. What do you want to say about the capital roof?
Number two completed, that project is ninety-nine, ninety-five percent completed. The only thing left to be done there is the library, and they'll do that on a weekend when they can have fine enough time. And when they can get the material, they still have not been able to get that material. It's a different material, but it's not a shingle, it's some sort of plastic, because it's a flat roof.
Did we get a reference of that?
Yeah, yeah, we had twenty, we spoke about this, we had a town meeting about it.
Yes, and you'll see here in the budget that we had, we adjusted the budget and reflect the incremental costs.
It's nice that that's finally done.
We were, it is, it's very nice that it's done, we've already had people come in and are giving, we're going out for an RFP to put solar panels on the top of that to help, you know, with some of the expenses, generate the electricity expenses there, so. It's nice to have that done and really accelerate that solar project.
As long, as long as I was on the school board, it always seemed like there was a roof job, and I was on for a very long time. It was always done in pieces. It was always done with money available or whatever, just like a decade plus trying to get the roof done.
And you say something about solar, I like solar.
Yeah.
But it's not in our budget, so you would be revisiting us with a solar?
Well, I expect that, I don't think that project will get ready for funding until the next fiscal year.
Oh, the next budget, got it.
And again, I'm hopeful we can get some, some federal and state support on that. And that's, and that's also gonna tie into the land in front of the town garage. That field will hopefully be a solar field, and eventually, when the, when the landfill is capped, that will, that will also be a solar field.
Excellent, very nice. Let us talk about cash flow. While the state has promised us fill in a dollar amount, we are currently funding that out of our own surplus.
That's our surplus money, hard at work. It will be reimbursed, or refilled back to where it is, but we were awarded the grant, it's just, OPM has not sent us the check yet, that's all.
Now, while we have all said it from time, but Connor Carmella just said it, this provides us a lot of flexibility. Having a surplus, a large surplus, gives us the flexibility to proceed with these kind of projects. While we talk about the benefits of a surplus, alright? Anyone have questions on the budget? It appears that we're doing fine on the current budget, again, subjective check.
I just wanna mention, and I've said it before, we need to plan, have plans in place for our recycling when Mira closes, which is gonna be in 2022.
Well, I encourage you to talk, yes, I agree with you, other than I think you talked to Angus and Russ, who are on the committee, who are in theory doing that, so I just nod yes, etc. Alright Angus, I remember Angus had no recommendations, but we'll talk about lots of things that he is currently doing. We talked about the police auto, we talked about school funding, I'll pick another one. Do you, let's talk about an expenditure you had last, in last year's budget, for a road, was it Kelsey Hill?
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Would you talk about that? I would like that you talk about.
Yeah, I told you about, intended to speak about tonight. When we did a, we did some work on Kelsey Hill and a couple of other spots in town, where we filled the cracks and then treated the pavement with some sort of synthetic that actually extends the life of, it softens the asphalt and extends the life of it. We did that, that, that project ran considerably over, there was some confusion in his proposal. He ran way beyond what it was supposed to be. I want to say twenty-five thousand dollars over what it was going to be. We didn't pay him, he and I have been negotiating back and forth, and we've decided, we've determined that, we believe that a a meeting halfway would satisfy his, his needs and ours. You know, he, in good faith, he continued the project knowing he was going beyond the time that he had allotted to do the project. It was not a not-to-exceed bid, it was a by-the-day project with a... So where we are now is, we've got money in the budget from last year to make that payment. I just wanted to be clear with everybody that we are making that payment, it's not, you know, we had, we had a proposal that said it would be so much a day, and we're gonna, we anticipate it's gonna take five days. It took him close to, close to a month, and, you know, he continued the job, he finished the job, as opposed to just dropping and leaving. And I think, I think meeting halfway is a, is a good compromise to satisfy his, his interests and ours, so.
Is that in the budget in last year's June thirty budget? You've already spent it yet?
No, yeah, we haven't spent it, but it is in the budget.
Oh, it is in the budget, excellent, so there's no, so there's a shortfall, it's within your authority to spend your budget, we do not need to get this board's approval, go to dummy. I'd say that's an excellent compensation. Anyone?
I just wanted to be clear about, you know, we're not trying to hide anything, we're not trying to do anything, it's just that's, that's what happened.
It was so bitter, I mean, so bitter, it's not like there was somebody else who was coming in a lower bid or something, yeah. So, anyone have any thoughts, curiosities, or...
On Kelsey Hill?
The feeling from the people on Kelsey Hill Road that what was done didn't work. The feeling from most of the people on Kelsey Hill Road that what was done did not work. They were, they're very upset with it, matter of fact. I heard complaints constantly.
No, I would love to speak with them, because it, and in fact, did work, the cracks are sealed, they're not expanding.
The traffic has reduced though, and I have seen the cops there, that's good. They were talking about the, when they put that gravel stuff down.
Loose gravel, yeah.
And it just, it made, it made a mess of all the cars, it just, it didn't, it just did, did not work.
I think that we're saying two things, it did work, it did what it was supposed to do, but it was a mess on the cars and did, had some unexpected or unanticipated effects on cars and things like that, but, but it did work, it, the seals are working.
Yeah, my problem was, they say, unanticipated effect.
Well, I, you know...
Maybe, maybe you didn't anticipate it, but the supplier should have anticipated it, because this isn't the first road he's done.
No, it's not, it's not at all.
I think we were led down a garden path here.
Okay, no, I appreciate Tom's...
There was a lot of gravel flying around near the high school.
I understand that, yeah.
Near the high school when you went up there.
Yep, yep.
Compared to other towns that do overall chip seal, that stuff all over the road, there wasn't anything in Kelsey Hill.
Well, that's true.
You know, other towns put full width, and it's a lot flying, you know, there's like a dust cloud over the road for, for a week or so, so.
And wasn't that road getting tons of traffic because of the bridge, the tour?
It did, that was well after this.
That was after that was done, and that was like last summer's project.
That was a different situation, and I, I understand if you repay the road, the road becomes a racetrack, I know that. You know, even though, like, I talked to you the other day about speed bumps, I'm a great believer in, slows people down.
My pet peeve is that Chester and Essex should pay for maintenance of Kelsey Hill. That's my pet peeve, because Chester and Essex uses it, their parents might not use it as much as our people use it, and they don't participate in the maintenance of that road, and that's my pet peeve.
Well, I didn't wanna repay it before, before the bridge project, because we didn't, we didn't know how much traffic and what damage it might have done, so. We're continuing to look at it. I appreciate the input on that, to Jim's point, it was, you know, if we had cracks sealed it and, and then done a chip sealing, it would have been more. Yeah, so, you know, I thought we were going the right direction.
Could you comment on that?
No, we will talk a little bit about speeding, and that's more of a board slide than saying...
People terrified of driving out of the driveways.
Really?
Because...
Because people speed, speeding. They'll go around corners at fifty, sixty miles an hour.
Wow.
And if you're coming out of your driveway, and a car is, and there's no car coming the other way, you're probably gonna be alright. There's a car coming the other way, it's all over.
Well, the funny, the funny thing about that is, we, we did put some police up there, much more increase of police up there. And during, and when school started, we started to get a lot of trouble, we got a lot of complaints. Why would we put police up there now that we're increasing traffic up there?
I think a lot of us people live there. There's a few that a lot of people live up to the top.
That's what we, the people that were, the people that were being pulled over were mostly residents of Kelsey Hill.
Way up the top of the hill, there's people who go up there sixty, seventy miles an hour, and you wanna do something, but it's illegal.
Based on this state. Could you comment on the American Rescue Plan, how you, what your status is, how you intend to proceed? You and I go back and forth on your approval process.
Yeah.
And would you incorporate into your answer the firehouse study, which hinted at may be covered by that? We have not put that firehouse study into our current budget, have we?
Yeah, we did it at the town meeting.
Well...
At the town meeting.
I know we approved it at the town meeting, did we bring it into our budget? Or is it, I believe, the city there, where you can decide whether it can be covered by the American Rescue, or whether we need to bring it into...
Well, we're communicating with, with some professionals as far as whether that is or not. Some of the things that we are looking to spend the money on, quite a bit of it is fire-related and public safety-related. The ambulance is, is looking to, for a new ambulance, and they may or may not be able to utilize it for that, so we're, we're researching that. Some of the things that are, that are, you know, top, top of the head, you know, fire hoses and things like that. We're also looking at a new generator, that generator was inspected here at the town hall, they're recommending that be replaced. A generator, a new generator at the firehouse and a generator up at the town garage. Now, we've got those two fuel tanks, if we lose power during a storm, we can't utilize, we can't give the gas, because we don't have a generator. So we're gonna have, those three generators are gonna be proposed to be purchased with, using the American Rescue Plan. The, I can't, I think it's upwards of twenty thousand dollars has been requested by the Connecticut Food Bank for a refrigerator truck. All of the towns in our Council of Governments have been asked if they would contribute towards that. Each town up to twenty thousand dollars, so that they can purchase that refrigerator truck and increase their services to our area. They, we have a, and I might be wrong with the Connecticut Food Bank, I'm not certain what the group is, but it's whoever has their meals. Shoreline Soup Kitchen, sorry, Shoreline Soup Kitchen, they provide meals at least once a week down at our Congregational Church. And they, they've, they've been, done great things over the course of this COVID and beyond, before that, and continuing to. So I, I would, I'm going to recommend that we, that we put up to twenty thousand dollar contribution towards that truck.
And we contribute twenty thousand, or we contribute to the twenty?
No, we contribute up to twenty thousand dollars out of our American Rescue Plan funds. And that is appropriate in a number of different rays, but, but it falls into something that I want to explain to you guys. I may have explained it once before, but I want to explain it again so folks understand it. We have right now six hundred and fifty-something thousand dollars, and we're expecting another six hundred and fifty. The way that this played out, the first six hundred and fifty thousand dollars was dedicated to the community. Across the country, counties were awarded monies. Connecticut is unique in that we don't have counties, and we don't have county, we don't have county governments. So those county governments, they didn't know what to do. Connecticut was able to convince the federal government that we would use our Council of Governments, and rather than send the money to the Council of Government, it would go, as if it was going to a county, it would be distributed evenly to the communities inside of what that county would be. So we have another six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that would have gone to county funds, but because we don't have a county, it came directly to us. So in many ways, we should, if we lived in any other state, we would have six hundred and fifty thousand, not a million and three to spend, and then our county would be spending it. So I think we are encouraged, and I am encouraging, I am following that encouragement and encouraging us to think that we should, some of this money should be spent on regional projects, and we're gonna try to, try to do some of that too. Shoreline Soup kitchens is one of those things. There are other things, you know, broadband internet throughout, throughout the area, we may, you know, contribute towards that and that kind of thing. So while we haven't gotten a, a list together yet, that list is, is coming together, and we will have some initial expenditures, I hope, to propose them next month.
So what is your approval, what is your anticipated approval process? Just selectmen, just selectmen board of finance, and potentially the town?
Well, I, I believe that we need to go, we need to go to town meeting. I don't know that we need to go through Board of Finance to get to that town meeting, because this is not budgeted money. So I don't know, we're looking for that answer, but I, we will at the very least, to be as transparent as we can as to how we're spending this, at the very least, we'll go through the Board of Selectmen and Town Meeting. I, I expect that we will go through Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Town Meeting, but I don't, I don't know that for sure.
I, I saw in the paper that Essex is going through Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and then to a town meeting. I don't know what the thoughts are on the Board of Finance, but my slight suggestion is, we got enough things to worry about.
Well, I, I think that, just, just, just to be as, not, I, I don't like the word transparent, but the intent of that, you know, we wanna be as open as we can about what we're doing and how we're doing it, and we want as much feedback as we can to, to, before we bring it to the town, so.
Questions, any thoughts, anyone on how we should participate, or just listen?
I think it's a great idea to open it up to the town, because then everybody participates.
Yeah.
And if it's benefiting the town, everyone has a chance to say, well, I think we should do thus and such with it, or I think we should do this with it, and it's not coming from a central ed, it's, comes from the people. So I think going to a town meeting is a great idea.
Tastes good. Alright, the last one I have on my agenda to chat about is, a while ago, we were awarded a steep step grant upstairs. Could you just give us the status and where that stands?
Yeah, we've, we have a contract with a, I can't remember the name of the firm, but our GIS system will begin to be installed shortly. I think that's about a six-month project. We are, we have our specs now on updated technology in the town hall, and that'll be going to bid soon, as soon as we can get the RFP together, and the technology for the, for the town hall, hopefully that'll... Uh, hopefully that'll be geared up too, as part of that. And then the, uh, we are getting, we're getting specifications prepared for us by a couple of local sign companies to, uh, for the electronic sign boards around town.
Do you have any expectations on cash flow? Will the state give us the dollars, we'll put it into a separate account, run it in a separate fund, or will it run through?
It's a reimbursement.
It's a re, ah, which is most likely, which means that we will need to, we, the Board of Finance, will have to finance that with our surplus. So we will have to make, decide how to do that, run this through the budget, which I don't want to do, or move money over to this other account we will reimburse.
Yeah, I will, I will have to look into how that, how that works, but I don't have an answer to that right now.
Wow, okay. It is, it is good to have a surplus, as King says. That is everything I have to converse on. Anyone have any other business they'd like to bring before the board? It is good to see us all. Let us, let's talk about such a dramatic technology. The Board of Selectmen, still, while we, you are recording, the Board of Selectmen is continuing to use Zoom to allow citizens to participate in meetings. What say the Board of Finance? Do you wish that we should have Zoom to allow people to participate?
Zoom, Zoom is difficult.
You have to have a Zoom manager paying a ventriloquist, yes, I assume.
But I, I, but I, I like the fact that people can look at everything and see what we're doing, hear what we say. That's important. But if it's being filmed.
Well, Zoom allows them immediate response, they can say, wait a minute, I have something to say about that, you know, whatever. It gives them an opportunity.
Good, we have an open forum, so they would have the opportunity to, I mean, we are not a board that invites the citizens to participate in everything we talk about. We do have a open forum.
So the only open time would be audience participation, then? So that's sort of counterproductive, then?
The only problem with that, you're gonna find the same people saying the same things.
I did not think when we had Zoom, we had much.
Nobody said any?
The only time we get real participation is at town meetings and things like that, that's when it should be.
So I'm going to say we will not Zoom, uh, but I'll go to Angus's rule of thumb. If any of us is not able to make this meeting, we could, you, any of us could request a Zoom and the meeting would be available to you if you're sitting at the front.
That's not my honest rule of the government.
You just told me, I thought it was a brand new rule, I was giving you credit for it, so, um, it gives you the ability to.
I will never request Zoom.
Really?
Just for the record.
You're going to be on some exotic island, uh, drinking wine.
I won't do it.
You want to come in? Oh, I remember some Zooms where you were in the backyard participating.
No, I was there in the backyard, I was always sitting in a stool with a coat on. Propped up on a hat.
Hey, just in FYI, Russ, you had mentioned the, uh, the middle school, um, entryway. That is going to be on our ballot in November.
Right, as a referendum.
Yeah, it's a referendum.
Another reason to register to vote.
Yes, it is.
Hearing no additional items to be discussed, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Some move.
To go on favor.
A second, second half.
We will see you next, uh, next week.